I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So. This evening we have Mike Beecher and Jessica Van Orte and John Malcolm for board members. We might have two others rolling in, but we have a quorum. Um, I am Kristin. And online we have Julie Mack and Deb Hawkins as well. And then in the audience tonight for everybody online, we have Frank, Harley, Dale, Nancy, and Tom. So my only other, uh, for additions, we have two additions tonight in addition to an already very full agenda. So, um, I am probably not trying to be rude, but I'm gonna try to keep us to a pretty swift, like, keep us to adhere to our time constraints, um, so that we can actually, you know, get through everything in an organized and timely fashion. Um, the additions, one of them, under facilities report, there's been a town hall auditorium use request. And then the other one, um, is there's a question about animal control under new business, I thought. And Bob Jones is here now, too. So. That's that, and then for the minutes, we have to approve the minutes from last meeting, which was February 7th.
All right, I'll move that we approved those minutes from February 7th.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Carrie. Any announcements? Reports. Zoning administrator.
Okay, first up, we have completed scanning of 2021 documents. I provided a lighting study documentation request to Kristin for the property that was for question over in West Pollitt. Investigative report of a camping trailer occupancy in West Pollitt. Um, I contacted the owner who had reported that the people living in the trailer had been served for eviction. I just received an update on the phone this evening that, in fact, they have been served. Jennifer Sullivan and I were scheduled to go Thursday morning, which we are not going because of A, because of weather, and two, because they've been served. So we're just gonna wait till next week to see what falls out before we take any action on that. Um, I researched regulation with the Cannabis Control Board for the, um, possibility of a growing site here in Pollitt. I had a discussion regarding a multifamily dwelling in West Pollitt, which we determined to be a large blended family and not a multifamily dwelling. I had a consultation with Merrill on, um, two issues regarding Slate Ridge. Submitted a new zoning application checklist, which I emailed to Kristin. I'm hoping to have the planning board approve it next week at least, and then bring it back for, uh, to the next select board meeting. Um, no new permits were issued. And the only other thing is I'm now reporting those scanning hours separately on my time card, but we're still keeping it all together, just so we can see how many hours are spent scanning versus regular zoning board work. That's all I have.
How do you feel that process is going, the scanning process?
It's going, it's going good. Um, I was surprised because I was hoping I could use Harley's help, but when you work through the NEMRAC system, you can't have two people doing it because you have to scan and be in the document at the same time. So it's not like you can sit there and scan a whole bunch of documents and then go in and upload them to each form. It has to be done one-on-one, so it's really a one-person, a one-person job. But it's, it's gonna make that whole research of looking up documents so much easier.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
So what, you gotta go back to like 1970 something?
Uh, you just, I'll go back as far as you want me to go back. I mean, I'll go back as far as everything that we have in there if you want.
Isn't that when zoning was enacted in town somewhere in the 70s?
And we're supposed to, those, those documents are supposed to be kept for forever, so. Wow. It's called job security.
Excellent.
So once your document in there, you can go into longer-term stories in a fireproof area, do you think?
Yeah, they could, but you don't even need to keep them really because every single document is scanned electronically.
With a backup.
With a backup.
Yeah. Like, you're supposed to keep the actual documents.
You don't have to keep the actual document. You have to keep the actual documentation.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for zoning administrator? Okay. Thank you very much. Um, revised forms are not till after the planning commission approves them.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and planning commission will be next week, so we have no report at this time.
So then, okay. And no report at this time. Road foreman. Hi Dale.
Hello.
Welcome. Thank you.
So I just, first of all, I guess I just wanted to thank you all for your trust and believing me to fill this position, so thank you all. I guess as far as what we've done in the last week since the last meeting is, uh, put a little gravel on a few muddy spots on some roads. Did a few last week, a few more this week. Harley, please be pleased with that. Um, we did some more brush cutting with the pool mower. Got a little more of that done and trucks and gravel. And that's kind of what the next few weeks are looking like as well. Carrie's last day will be Tuesday, so a week from today. And then I've made a list of projects that I'd like to, you know, see for this coming year. I think you all have it, Todd. We don't need to go over that now. I know you've got a full plate for tonight, but, um, maybe just something you can look over and carry any questions and concerns or whatever. There'll be more than what's on this list. This is kind of the, the big list of, you know, some of the major, major things to do. There's gonna be, you know, ditches to clean here and there and gravel to apply and, you know, so on, other things. But, um, this is kind of our big list, so.
Excellent. That's a good start. Anybody have any questions for Dale? Yeah, I guess, I guess at this point where everything seems to be going well, you're all set for Wednesday, whatever, whatever decides it wants to bring, so.
Yeah, and I'm gonna have to wait tomorrow night, I guess, and Thursday I'll be attached.
Everything, everything is performing well. We don't have any issues with any other department right now, so.
Yeah, it's all.
When you left the garage today, that's as good as we could expect, right?
And we're loaded and carried out tomorrow, so I'm gonna check some muddy, muddy spots and try to adjust them off the degree here and have them ready for, you know, for Thursday. But, uh, probably have Stan in the motor, I'm guessing, just to take care of some of the muddy, muddy spots is my hope. So, Carrie and I will take the trucks and try to do where we can, but it's not gonna make those roads worse, so.
The, uh, the latest, the, the snow line has moved. Uh, so they're looking like four to eight around here instead of the eight to 12 of snow. And it's gonna, you're supposed to change over to sleet and freezing rain a lot sooner now than what they anticipated, so. But four to eight and then some nasty stuff following it there.
I guess the good part is it's looking like mid to late morning. On Thursday it'll end and then get regrouped for the next one over Thursday, Friday morning, so.
Kind of a little freeze up.
But that is gonna be cool. So there won't be no more complaints, I'm guessing, that's right. But we're just doing the best we can with that. As, as the weather allows, we're trying to get a little gravel down on, you know, spots where it's, seems to be kind of an odd year, spots that don't, you know, we haven't seen an issue in quite some time are the ones that are kind of showing up this year. But, uh, all in all, they're, I wouldn't call any of them horrible. Insurance people would argue with me over that. All in all, they're not, they're not horrible, so. When they're frozen, we're trying to get them adjusted and get people over.
Okay. Thank you. Assessors, anything from the assessors? Town clerk.
Deb, did you wanna share yours, or?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, you're in the mountains.
Um, yeah. I couldn't get my other computer to work, so I'm on the, the house computer. Um, so there's one liquor license renewal to approve. There's no signatures necessary.
Oh, here.
Kristin, I left it on your, on your table. Um, so it's, it's, uh, for Sheldon's Market. And really all I need is an approval because, like, a motion and approval. And then I can go into the portal and do what needs to be done for the next step. See, that's the only one that I've gotten so far. Um, also, I think Kristin, I left you the SWAC representative appointment form. I was thinking that that could be done the same night as, uh, during, for the organizational meeting, but I think she has some bold letters on that as soon as possible. Right now, I believe it's, uh, in the Langitson. Okay?
SWAC is Solid Waste Alliance Communities. What another acronym.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Um, so I don't know if the organizational meeting has been scheduled, but there does need to be one following the town meeting, so that would be the next night. And there is a board abatement meeting next Tuesday, 28th, uh, that, and I thought we were gonna be running short on a forum, which we are if we do it in person. I had a request from a BCA member to make it a hybrid. So Kristin, I will email you with the, with the, it's, it's next Tuesday. Maybe one of you know, I, uh, because I don't have the warning in front of me. I think I had it for starting at 6:15 or 6:30. So maybe if you had it open, Kristin, for 6:15, um, and then, um, I can put in the credentials and send out an updated warning. I have, I have three JP's, or, yeah, JP's that'll be out of town. So it kind of cuts it a little close on a forum. And this is a board that we have to have a majority of the whole and not the majority of those present. So if you can't make it, please let me know as soon as possible. That would be great. Um, there's four for fleet, holdern weight permits for Bob to sign. Um, I'm not in the office tomorrow, but I will be in on Thursday. Does anybody have anything that they would like to address?
If I can, I came up with, I saw the ballots. You sent out ballots, just the ballots.
Yes. Yeah, I sent out some, um, some early voting ballots, not many, but some.
So the Sheldon's Market thing, we still have to vote and approve it, but we just don't sign it, right?
Right, there's no place for a signature. Um, I, you're the, you're the local commissioner, liquor commissioners or whatever the title is. So I think if there's just a motion that we've accepted, I think, I think that's what you've done in the past and then signed it, but there, I don't see anywhere on there that there's a place for signatures.
Okay.
And then I go into, of course, this is new this year, that everything is done through their portal. Then I have to go in and put in all the information that it's been approved and, um, find out how she goes ahead and pays PLC for her portion of it. Normally I would send that, but I'm not sure what the procedure is this year. So we'll get that worked out, um, once we're all approved and moving forward. I haven't heard from any of the others yet.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion, a liquor license to sell liquor at Sheldon's Market?
Yeah, sure, I'll move that, we're renewing it, right? Yeah, I move that we renew that license.
Renew that license.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie.
Um, what about the organizational meeting? Do we wanna establish that while that topic?
That should be Wednesday night at 8:00.
So that's the 8th, right?
I believe so.
Right?
Yes, the seventh is the meeting, the election.
No, we don't have a meeting on that night. Usually we get somebody.
We do have a meeting on the 7th as well. So it's voting, town meeting day to vote down here, so we're gonna have to meet upstairs. So we do have a select board meeting on the 7th, and then we'll have an organizational meeting on the 8th.
Right, and town meeting on Monday.
Yeah, Monday, too. We're gonna have a
Yeah, three nights.
fun series of nights of time together, everyone. Doesn't that be great?
Test is set up with the equipment.
What?
All the equipment shuffling here and there.
Do you believe that Lenny is still okay with doing this SWAC, or?
Um, I can call him. I don't have a problem reaching out to Alyssa. I mean, I just wanted you guys to see, see it and make sure that you guys were all okay with keeping Lenny if he's, if he's willing to be kept on.
Well, I say that since he hasn't said no, that we keep rolling with it. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Okay.
So if we're all in, we're all in favor of keeping Lenny on.
I am in favor.
Alphine, anybody wanna be alphine? No, okay.
It stands for solid waste. Solid waste, uh.
What's the F and S for?
What does the A stand for in SWAC?
Alliance.
Alliance?
Alliance Communities. Solid Waste Alliance Communities.
Doesn't really roll off the tongue.
No, that's why it's SWAC.
SWAC does, though, so.
Um, there is also a, a thing that I got us involved in. Um, behind Dale on the table where we have the battle, battery recycling, we also have now envelopes that people can bring in their, um, like expired prescriptions. Um, and they're prepaid, prepaid envelopes with a seal. So I'm, I'll get that information out there, but they just came in today. Um, that was something that was offered to municipalities, and I thought it might be a good, a good idea to just pop it in and mail it, and they don't have to worry about it.
I guess. We'll send that paper for you, and I can go back to SWAC and we're good. No other questions, sir, for Deb? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doc.
Okay, thank you.
And town treasurer's memo.
Hi, this is just late. Two warrants this week, payroll was seven X and $598.54 X. Count's payroll was 27, 833, 05. General fund, $14,331, 13 highway. $13,115 to 40 base wire, $7,948, 06. Uh, the tax year has been closed into the Duane plant levy, uh, which was like less this year than last, was turned up virtual to the Duane collector. I've not yet had time to do the final reporting for you tonight, and I'll have an F and S meeting. Um, I programmed, well, thermostat is still not working. I called M and M about it before I went on vacation, but I haven't heard back. And I wasn't, I'm gonna try again, so I will try it probably next week on that. And that's it for me.
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion. We accept warrant 23046 and warrant 23047.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie. Emergency management.
All right.
Thank you, Julie.
Um, so there's no report, but Bob Marleino, I forwarded everybody this, I think, last week, but, um, a note from Bob. It's time for the five-year update to the town's local hazard mitigation plan. Vermont Emergency Management has awarded the town of Pollitt a sub grant under the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, BRIC, 2021 to update the town's local hazard mitigation plan, which is the LHMP. The process is different than previous years and will require hiring a consultant. In the past, we worked with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission exclusively, but now we have to post an RFP to garner competition. RRPC can be and would like to be one of the organizations applying to our RFP, but we will have to see who else responds. In 2018, on July 31st, the select board signed a certificate of adoption, which mentions that the emergency management director will be responsible for annually monitorizing and evaluating the plan and updating this plan at least every five years. I think it would be prudent to again designate the emergency management director to be responsible for the new plan, and I'm asking for that authorization so that it is clear in the current process and that I have the authority from the board. If you are all in agreement, a short note that authorizes the emergency management director to be responsible for the 2023 update to the local hazard mitigation plan and to be the authorized representative for the town of Pollitt, Pollitt for the current update. Regards, Robert Marleena. So, I think, um, a motion is probably what we could use, and then I can send a little note, package it up in a pretty little note, and off we'll go.
I'll make that motion. I'll move that we authorize Bob Marleino to do the updates, well, 2023 updates to our local hazard mitigation plan.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Bob Marleino's gonna take care of it.
And, yeah, I have heard from Rutland Regional Planning Commission that they want to apply for it, so. And, and Bob has been in touch with them, so I'm sure that he will let them know once he's got the RFP out.
Kristin, he did have one question, and that was that he needs a copy of our procurement policy, if we have one.
Hmm, okay. Um, well, that's a super good question, and I will look into it, figure it out. Procurement policy.
I think we do in that, we, we have a policy about, above what, around the money.
Above $500.
Yeah, we do have that policy.
So, yeah, anything above $500.
We went through that all.
We have been through that.
We talked about all the different things.
So as it stands now, anything above $500 needs approval in the motion. Um, and below does not, but I think that.
We find it all written down.
It might be in the employee handbook, but it might be a separate policy. I'm not entirely sure.
All fine, we'll, we'll.
I'm sure I can remember, we've gone over that in the past. It wasn't recently, but quite a few years ago, we read through it and.
We will.
Anything to do with some of the stuff that Julie had been going over with you, maybe?
Yeah, maybe. We will, we will find it.
Anything from the health officer?
No.
No. Anything wastewater? We have a bad pump in the, at the plant, so the new motor's now eight, nine hundred bucks. We're getting that ordered. A new person started working at the plant Monday, so that's all.
But they're still seeking a local part-time person to do daily ops visits. And so, um, Jill and I got together and she provided me with a job description, and that's been posted to the website. So, if anybody knows anybody that would like to dabble in the wastewater treatment facility, um, go online to pollitt.gov and contact Jill.
And that's about it for the wastewater treatment facilities. And facilities report municipal building work schedule?
We haven't gotten any further with that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I've had some stuff going on with my family in the last couple of weeks and haven't got hold of them. But I do have the contact information that you sent me, and I will.
Okay, good.
I will get on that.
Town hall auditorium request.
So, um, the Pollitt Historical Society has requested to use the town hall auditorium for their 50th anniversary celebration on July 22nd, 2023. Um, some, the event would start around 1:00, and they will be displaying artifacts and photos, and there will be a speaker's event as well as a children's program. And some events may also sprawl out into the library and on the green. So, um, Judy has submitted this. If we have any questions, we can contact Judy. And, um, there's the hopes that the air conditioning would be operational by the time of event, which I would imagine
Great idea.
hopefully would be, so.
Anything else?
So we have to approve that if we're okay with that.
Bob made a motion to approve the use of the Historical Society.
I second.
Jessica seconded. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie. Does Julie have a report from the Metawi School Board?
I don't think so.
I do not, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Older unfinished business. Town hall wifi.
Yeah, I just left that on there. I don't know if Deb or Julie have gotten anywhere with that, but it had, it was something that was discussed a couple of meetings ago about the need or the desire to want to, um, you know, tighten up the wifi here. So I don't know if anybody had asked, um, when the.
Just Deb, do you have a information?
Yeah, I, I, of course, Vinnie had recommended that we, um, have a secure wifi for the town, just because of the nature of, of the cyber world these days. So I contacted VTAL, and, um, you can, you can hold on to your seats because this, you won't believe this. Um, Joanne Wade was still the administrator on the account, so I could not make any kind of requests over the phone. So they sent me, um, a form whereby I could list new administrators to make any kinds of requests for changes to our account. Um, I've done that, and Vinnie is on it, and myself, and Julie. I listed as, as administrators. So that gives Vinnie the, the, the clear to go ahead and do what he needs to do. So I just need to call him and set that up so that he can come in because he's starting to get a little nervous about it. Um, so he, he just, he mentioned it when they first secured him as our IT person, um, but now he's, he's starting to get nervous. Uh, so we'll get him in there, and he, he now should have the, the all clear to contact VTAL, and they will recognize him as an active administrator. So that's where that is.
Okay, so it's in process. Excellent. Thank you, Deb.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So the streetlight issue in West Pollet, you did some research and...
Yeah, I don't know. I, so I got information from Green Mountain Power about, um, whether and if the board should decide that they want to reinstall a streetlight. I got information about pre- cost, um, but then Nancy was able to pull up from 2014, I think it was, the Energy Committee, um, did an entire study, and there was a lot of really great information from Green Mountain Power, was it?
From Green Mountain Power and Efficiency Vermont.
Yeah, about the purpose of streetlights and where they should be, and how, you know, 20 to 50 years ago, streetlights were put up for one reason, and then everybody went back through and realized that, you know, the intention of why they were put up, they maybe weren't serving that same purpose, so, um, I was all, it was sent all to you, I'm sorry, I sent it a little late.
You did send it to me. I looked it over some quick. I didn't get as much time to look at it as much as I wanted to. But it was, it was a big, long, complicated, or not really complicated, but it was an involved process.
And you know, the, the long and the short of it is where, where she's talking about where her house is located, a streetlight's gonna serve no purpose, because first off, this, the poles are on the opposite side of where her driveway is. The new LED lighting is very directional, so that you don't have light pollution, so it shines just down on the roadway. And I guess her issue is she's concerned about, um, emergency services finding her house, um, and I gave to Kristen that the, for her, the more economical solution is to put a 911 sign out at the end of her driveway.
I know it doesn't seem like much to put a streetlight in, but that opens a door.
It opens the door, and it's not gonna serve the purpose that she's looking for. If she wants to be able for people to see where she is, she'd be better off either doing that, if she wants people to be able to locate her house, or if she wants her house seen from the road, then it should be something that's mounted on her house or on her property to illuminate her house. And a street, a streetlight's not gonna do that.
Quite honestly, tonight, when I came home, her porch light was on, and it was clear to see that there's a house back there. And I, if I was driving up to Spruce Gum, there's, there's a lot of residents that don't have a streetlight directly in front of them, and...
And I think too, something that I took away, the purpose of the streetlights is for roadway safety, so it's, it's meant to illuminate the roadway, so that, so it's not so much about, you know, pedestrian or residential visibility. That's not so much the intention of why they're there. Um, and based on the study that was completed in 2014, it was determined that the number of streetlights that we currently have in town are what is suggested to have the optimal roadway safety for that area, so, um, so, yeah, that was the, the takeaway from all of that, but...
And there's no sidewalk in front of her house either?
Sorry, just a little funny though.
I thought that was going to fall.
Oh, thank you.
So I think, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see the need for the town to put a streetlight in front of her house. I don't know what the rest of the board feels like, but...
I think there's several other options, uh, reflectors at the end of the driveway, whether they, I mean, you could put colored reflectors and say that the purple, the per- between the purple reflectors or whatever, but uh, yeah, I think we would open ourselves up to everyone that wanted their driveway entrance lit up and their front yard lit up and stuff, uh, coming in requesting a, a light. I, I think it, it's kind of for the wrong reason, I think, but...
I have a question. Is, do we know, and maybe Bob might know, but is there, since this is an E, these are E911, right? So they're encouraged, ooh, sorry Zoom, it just went out. Oh, there they are. So, you know, they're encouraged by emergency responders? I wonder, is there any sort of like, would there be any sort of grant funding or, or opportunity to get?
Townwide?
Townwide for these? I don't know. I wonder...
It's a good point.
It, you know, if it's something that would, that in theory every house should have for safety, and I don't know, just a thought, maybe I can ask Bob. Cause I know this is not the first person that has wanted to be more visible, and I know that I think the fire departments and rescue squads would probably appreciate being able to see whose resident is where, so...
Yeah, or maybe they could help with installation for people that aren't able to do it themselves.
Yeah, I can ask. Frank has a hand raised.
Frank?
I've seen where those are used, and driving through different towns I've been driving through, and it's the no-brainer for the EMS or fire department, it boom, it's standardized, and I have to look around the house where the number is, so it works, I think.
Kristen?
That makes sense.
Yeah? You're muted.
Thanks. You didn't miss anything that good. Just kidding, it's all very good. We're talking about, um, the opportunity for better s- emergency signage, and discuss the potential of, of, you know, grant funding or something to obtain E911 signs. Thank you for the mute. Okay, so would you like for me to reach out to Tammy and inform her?
John, I didn't really ask. We kind of got sidetracked. John, how do you feel about it?
I agree there are other options, and some are better options, uh, to say her concerns.
Okay. And Jessica, you agree? So, yes, please reach out to Tammy and say that the, the board has decided that they don't, we're not going to put a streetlight there, she'll have to come up with an alternative.
Okay.
All right. The cannabis control, um, we're still in process. We, we have some things we need to work through on the application, right? Nancy, as far as zoning?
I mean, there's, there are, you know, as I told you, we haven't heard back from the cannabis control board, um, to answer our questions, but the, the big thing is that his greenhouse is designated right now as ag, which that does, he has to change that designation, because cannabis is no longer considered an ag crop, so he can't grow it in that greenhouse. The second issue too is, there's a whole host of rules and regulations regarding, um, indoor growth as far as the site and property security and ventilation and energy efficiencies, which, again, all fall back on him. One example is, that site has to be screened from the road, so you can't know that it's there growing cannabis. And as you come up with 30 headed north, like behind Esther's house, you can, you can clearly see the greenhouse.
We just have to be careful.
It's not public who's, who the applicant is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's, there's a lot of things that have to be communicated to him. I don't know if that communication has happened through, through the cannabis control board or if it needs to come through us, but definitely from a zoning issue, the designation of that building needs to change.
Would it be to a commercial use?
So that's, this is the funny thing, Jessica, because if you read the cannabis control board thing, I think it has to be changed to a commercial use, but their regulations say that you can't tell somebody that's growing that they need to be in a commercial zone, because they don't want to restrict cultivation.
There are, there are commercial uses in ag rural residential.
Yeah.
I mean...
That, it ju- so happens that designation, that property already has a commercial designation, so that's not an issue. It's just the building itself doesn't, has to be switched over. So, again, I'm saying that I guess it has to be a change of use that would come before the...
Um, I just wanted to contribute that I did get an email from the cannabis control board about this, and reminding us, they were urging the board to make a decision, and reminding us that if the board doesn't formally submit a decision, then it will go ahead as assumption that the, that the town supports it.
What was the date of your communication with them? Because as I said, we, there were a whole bunch of issues sent to them that they haven't responded to.
It was the same day. Um, Mike, do you remember when that was? Deb had brought it to our attention. It was the day that you had said that you would contact them, um...
Cause I contacted them on February 9th.
Okay, um, I have to find it. Oh, here. So on the 15th, I got a message, um...
Kristen, if you can send me whoever that email is, contact?
Yep, it's, I, I will do that. So it, it was reminding us that they have been, according to the cannabis control board, this applicant has been approved, and that, um, ish, for, final issuance is pending approval by our local control commission. So they stated that they've met all of the control board's requirements, and so they just wanted to get, and I, I can forward you this email.
Yeah, if you could, cause I, I just, as I said, there were some questions we had regarding...
Um, Nancy, I also have a phone number, I think, for him in my, um, my, my phone log, that I think I also sent to, uh, Mike.
Yeah, I ended up talking to him and told him, that guy, that we were, we were still negotiating through zoning issues, and he said, okay, I'll just check him, just see how it was going. He didn't seem like it was any big deal to him, but...
Yeah.
He wanted to talk somebody to hear, so...
Yeah, if I could just have that contact, because the ones that I've been reaching out through their website doesn't go anywhere else.
So the email that I forwarded to you has a name, and then it has two phone numbers. It looks like it has this person's direct line, and it also has, uh, looks like a generic line, so there are a couple emails and two phone numbers on there.
Right.
What's our deadline for making the decision?
Um, so, uh, saying the reminder email was February 15th, um, of course, it just says 60 days, um, so I would have to look...
I think that we'd be okay by next meeting.
Yeah.
I'll give a call tomorrow.
Oh, here, on the 1st is when I got the email, saying we had 60 days, so we have time.
We would be good in March, yeah, okay.
Trying to see what, if I can remember, that guy...
Was it Reynal- Reynold or Reynold?
It's not the guy's name. I think, I think this, this was a guy from Bear that I talked to.
It was, yeah, I think it was the same person. So, Frank has his hand raised.
Frank?
Uh, no, since it's not agriculture, because agriculture vice passes, like the zoning regulations, except for setbacks for most parts, summary wise, as a use, but since it's not agriculture and commercial, then there would be hypothetically a, a change of use to this, as there been an application ma- made A. And B is the overall lot in excess of 10 acres, which then Act 250 would come in under our 10-acre, um, rules that we pushed through in the past year or so, but Jessica's helped.
All right. I guess we'll keep, we'll consider all that, and we keep pushing on, so, thank you.
I have a few quick grant updates, um, still in, if we're still in old business. Um, last time I had, said I was gonna meet with Jackie from V-Trans, who's in charge of the rail trails, and we had a good meeting. Um, I gave Deb Jackie's contact info, so that if anybody calls the town hall with issues about the rail trail, that Deb has the number to pass them along to, so that we can get issues fixed with the rail trail. Um, they are, she talked a little bit about the, um, the maintenance that they're gonna have scheduled. I think they've got some maintenance scheduled for, like, next fall along the trail, but she'll, they'll keep us updated about when that's gonna happen. Um, I did ask her about that old rail shed, the one that is currently, yeah. Um, and she was not aware of this, because of course, V-Trans just took over the rail trail from A and R, and she's gonna look into it from their end and see why, what the reason was for them wanting it to be moved, and if they still want it to be moved or not, basically. So she's going to try to find out what's going on with it. Um, I know that for the, for the West Pollet Village Master Planning process, that Michael's been talking about that building, and about if the town was able to get hold of that building, that perhaps we might move it to a slightly different location, basically that it could be very useful for sort of a, a gathering spot, or for some, an adjunct building to the rail trail, or something like that. So, um, what, what would we need to do as a board to get like, what's the most up-to-date information about this? We know it's in bankruptcy, but, about the status of that particular building.
Now, we have, you were on the board when, what was the story? I, I wasn't even on the board then.
She went into like, chapter 11 and...
No, why did they want us to sell it? What, what happened?
Oh, that, um...
John Long had it, right?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact, um, I think they just, they wanted to get rid of it. The, they didn't want the liability, they didn't want, so they basically gave it to the town, so that we would clear it off their land. Well, I think we seized a, an opportunity to, one, get it out of the roadway there, because you have to kind of drive around it, and, you know, we could prosper by selling it for, for several thousand dollars, so we did, and then it just came back to bite us year after year after year to try to get rid of it.
Yeah.
We looked into it, using it, utilizing it, and it's, uh, the way it's all caught up inside, and there wasn't anything that we could, you know, you couldn't really use it as a regular garage. You might be able to use it as maybe a carpenter's workshop or something like that, but there's, there's, it's not one big room inside, it's a, an obstacle course inside.
Was it, how sound was the building?
How sound?
Like structurally sound?
It's, it's still, it's still in good shape that way. Yeah, the roof hadn't, you know, deteriorated or anything, but, um, yeah, just, it wasn't gonna serve a purpose for the town, um, for anyone.
Well, how would we find out? How would we find out if it's still in bankruptcy, or like, who would we talk to, to find out the status?
Well, Kim keeps, actually, that, well, that's one of the things that comes up.
She's pursuing it.
And, and next Tuesday's...
So Kim's been looking into it?
Board of Abatements, she keeps trying to collect the taxes on it.
Okay.
And that's one of the three abatements, I think.
Yeah, I think it was, you're right.
Right?
Let me give your thumbs up.
You're right, Mike, it is.
Okay.
She would know the most of...
She'll, she'll definitely have the most idea, because she keeps bothering them.
Great. Thank you. So yeah, that's the, that's the update with, um, V-Trans. Um, the, the sidewalk grant, which we signed last time, I sent that to Peter Pochop. We're waiting on him to have them sign it and send the fully executed... We're waiting on him to have them sign it and send the fully executed agreement back to us. So that's, and once that happens, we can get with Rutland Regional Planning Commission to move forward on them administering that grant for us. The Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities Grant finally came through. This is when we applied for, it was basically two years ago. This was a while. And we finally got the grant agreement. So this is for the resurfacing of the rail trail parking lots in Rupert and in West Pollet and for doing the study on that little white building to see if we could change it into a, like, a welcome center for the rail trail. So I'm going to get back together with the project committee. Well, probably first with Jim from the Bennington Regional Planning Commission. And we will get rolling on that. That was a grant that was entirely covered a hundred percent, so. That's my grants updates.
Did you, did you get notification that I did get?
Yeah, yeah, I did get notification, yeah, that's what I'm reporting back. I got the notification that it's fully executed and we can move forward with that now.
Because they said I needed to sign it and send it back, but then that other lady was on vacation for a few days. So it, it dragged out for a few more days.
No, it's, it's taken care of, yep, that's complete. Yep.
Anything else? Excuse me. So that's all on the grant business, okay. Anything else under old or unfinished business? New business? We had a letter of interest for the DRB position?
Yep, and Tom is here.
Just came just introduced myself. I'm Robert, I'm one thirty-three. And it's come to my attention you have an open seat and I'd be more than willing to donate my time.
Great, thank you. That's one thing we kind of overlooked, that that position became available.
So that position, that position has been available, I believe at this point there might be two.
Two full positions and an alternate?
So currently, so I was looking on the website. It says currently that Keith is the chair. That, so it's, on the website, it says Keith's name, John Weiss, Sarah Ludlam, James Glick.
And Gary.
And Gary. So James Glick and Keith, James was listed as the alternate. But obviously, you know, James and Keith are not here. And so neither of, so there's two vacancies. I think there's a vacancy in the position, which according to John Weiss, this, the vacancy in the the full position has been open for over a year. And then the alternate is also something.
Sarah was also, was always listed as an alternate.
Sarah was always the alternate and then I think when they, it came down to the fact that it was just Keith, John and Sarah as active members, Sarah stepped in as more of a full-time member and James was the alternate because he wasn't around. So James is currently not around, still, he's out of.
Is he coming back in the spring?
I don't think in a full-time capacity. I'm not totally sure, but I'm not, yeah. So I, I got a little bit more information from John and I think that the reality is that there's been a need for quite a while and it just hasn't been, it has not been advertised.
Because Brian Rawls was also on that too.
Maybe Brian still is. I, I also realized that I think the website needs some updating there, which I was going to get with Sean on to say we need to go through all the different.
I think the last bunch was, was Keith and John and Gary and Sarah and Brian. And I think that, and James. And I think that was the last, the last full group.
Deb, do you know is Brian still?
That's what I've been trying, if you look at the town report, the information that's in there is from John. So the DRB that's listed in the town report is the most current DRB that is in existence right now. And I believe Sarah has moved from alternate to a DRB member, but I'm not sure on that. But I did, I did talk with John or I emailed him and he, before I did the town report and he gave me all the updated information. There's somebody behind Nancy.
Yeah, I grabbed one.
Frank? Uh, maybe we should add this on the agenda of the planning commission? Can a member of the planning commission be a member of the DRB at the same time?
Isn't Gary?
Gary is.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we should ask the members of the planning commission if anybody wants to be on a DRB because they already know the rules.
Probably, I mean, we might as well do this appointment when we point everybody else at the, at the other meeting, the organizational meeting, so.
Yeah.
I think it would be worthwhile if there, if there is still another position open besides the one that Tom wants to fill. I think it would be worthwhile to just sort of send out a general, you know, put it out in the email and send it out to folks because I, at least with, with the, with the meetings that we've been having with the planning in West Pollet, a lot of people who are interested in community service have been coming out of the woodwork and saying that they want to get involved with stuff. So I think that, you know, like with community revitalization and it, it, it might be the case that a year ago there weren't folks who might be interested, who might be interested now. If we do need another person.
Should we, we at least have positions and alternates to fill in that. So if we could put a blurb out and that we could fill, we could appoint them at the organizational meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to do appointments. I think that it's wonderful that Tom.
Absolutely.
Put his hat in the ring and is interested, let's see.
Brian is listed.
Deb said page seven, thank you Deb. So Brian is still currently on it until.
Yeah, till March of next year.
Okay, for another year, okay. So we'll make appointments for that.
You could put something in the minutes or something to say we're looking or something else. What other, any other spot you could think of, Jessica?
We'll suggest that people look at their annual report and see what's available for open positions and to submit interest, letters of interest before the organizational meeting, right?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, because I, at least one of the, I mean, I, I haven't heard from more than one of the people on the planning commission. So it's possible, there are, there are a couple terms that are up if anybody's interested, you know. I'm assuming that the folks who are currently on will remain interested, but you never know.
You got an email from Gary, right?
Yeah, got that one.
He's ready to go again?
So there's one other new business item that I added, but it's not on the agenda. So it has to do with animal control, small animal control in the community. So a resident contact, just this evening before the meeting actually stopped in as I was getting set up and let me know, they live just down the road and let me know that they found eight kittens, young cats somewhere in this vicinity. And picked up the cats and, you know, was aiding them, you know, bringing them back to health. Wasn't sure what to do, contacted a friend who put her in touch with the animal control person in Rupert, somebody named Kelly. And Kelly was like, oh, absolutely, let me help you out. Paid for the first round of vet visits out of the animal control budget in Rupert for all the cats. Then it was sort of determined that, hey, she maxed out her budget and you're in Pollet, so maybe, because there's another round, so the, this person's plan is to get the second round of vet visits for all eight cats and then is working with Kelly, I, I think, my understanding, if it's correct, to home, re-home all these cats. So that's the plan. So this person contacted Dave Ricard about it, was given his number and he pretty much said that he didn't really have the ability to make that decision and that it needed to come to the board. So this resident is requesting from the board that we consider utilizing a budget, some budget, if there is some, for the second round of vet bills as Rupert did. And I let them know that I would give that update to you all.
Where, in the past, where have we, where have we gotten the money for that? We never really have, we bought, we bought dogs.
Yeah, Dave has a budget for food and that, but for medical.
Because our life is on our property, I bring them up.
We would aid with medical and then get reimbursed by the owner. But if there's no owner, technically, I think we're opening ourselves up. I think they probably should go to the Humane Society and.
So Tom just offered, there's a, the Humane Society in Castleton will do all of that. There's grant funding for it and so if you bring a feral cat up.
As a feral.
Right. My understanding, I think, is that the suggestion, suggestion to this person from Dave was to go, go ahead with doing the procedure, pay for it and we'll ask about it. So I think now she's found herself in this, in a tight spot. So I didn't, you know, say that any decisions would be made this evening. I just said that I would bring it up because it's nothing that I've heard of.
We want to address it right away and.
Deb has a hand raised.
Deb?
Yeah, I spoke with that same gal, she came in and she, from what I gathered, I gave her Dave's phone number. I, I didn't believe that there was a budget, but I figured Dave should be the one to address that. But I think that she, she is talking about the two cats that she is keeping. I don't think it's eight cats, because I think the other cats have been distributed to other homes. So I think that it's, I think if it's the same person that we're talking about, it's two cats that she's decided to keep and she can't afford, because of lack of work right now, she can't afford to take them to the second, to the next round. I think we're talking about the same person.
It sounds, sounds like we are, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because she mentioned Kelly, she mentioned the eight cats. I actually think that John and Sue have two of the cat, of the eight cats that were. So anyway, they, there were, were eight cats originally and they've been distributed to homes other than these two and she's trying to home them.
We don't have any, any type of funding set aside for that type of.
Okay. Give the person my personal contact.
Okay.
I'd like to help with these cats.
Okay. I will, I will link you up.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm a sucker for cats.
Okay.
Well, I don't want them, but I can assist.
I've heard of these cats, I know somebody else who also took in one of the cats and also out of their own, you know, heart.
Yeah, I can help get them their shot.
Okay. Thank you. I have her.
If I just get to home.
Let me just cuddle them. I have your, I have her information.
I just recently adopted a seventeen-year-old cat from a, from a relative, so yes, wow. Moving right along.
Moving right along. Um, okay. Okay, that's great. So that's all I had for new business and that bring, does any, is there anything else?
Public comment, I guess. Frank?
On the freight building at the railroad, going, is, the question is, is that chapter seven or chapter eleven? Because chapter, one of them's reorganization, the other one's liquidation. And so.
You have to ask him, I really don't know.
That would be a key question. And because it was discussed quite a bit at the store-focused, corner store-focused West Pollet Planning Group meeting, the last, last couple, the next one's Thursday, it's coming Thursday, but and it has to do with gathering places.
I hear it. John is showing us his cat. The choice of Zoom.
So the question was, was that. And if the state gets involved, what you're talking about, then they would want to figure out the legal ownership and the status of this chapter one or chapter seven because they may have rights to it.
If it's on their property.
But it, but it, but the town is out of it because it already went to the town, we passed it off and it's in a court, but the state may have an interest because it's on their property.
Jackie, she said something along those lines, which was that there, in the original, since the state originally owned it, there might be back, there might be in the deed something about, after this many years, it will revert back to the state. So she's looking into that. Like if it's in bankruptcy long enough, it might just revert back to the state, so, yeah.
And along the corners, first meeting was the intersection, which went interestingly well. The second meeting was the general air it, the town ambiance and sidewalks and stuff. And this next, last meeting was this corner store. I've been to two of the corner stores that Michael used as an example. And there's a program in Vermont, it's a, it's a preservation trust where they were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars being brought in and used by a preservation trust to revitalize the store. And they become the landlord and essentially, like up in, up in Shrewsbury, they're renting it out to a local nonprofit to operate the store literally almost for free. Okay, so that's how they're doing it in a lot of places in the state. So that's something that has promised for West Pollet and that building is a candidate. And that's especially of that interest. And that, the next meeting is a gathering place, which could also be the same structure and firehouse and a gathering place type of thing. So, and it's Thursday night at six o'clock if anybody wants to go.
Thank you.
Bring, bring a little finger food to eat or something. That was it. Huh? Do you have any?
No, no, I was talking about the snow.
The, the, the snow? So that's, that's the only, only, that's moving along. The only thing we don't have in the itinerary and so far discussed in the West Pollet thing is an energy component, which I'll be bringing up at this subsequent meeting on Thursday night and see if we need to extend that any further, because it really should, for long-term planning, have an energy component to the village there and be discussed.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have anything for the, offer for the public comment? All I could think of is Robert Rule said, for the good of the company. All right, we're going to go into executive session to discuss some attorney confidential stuff. Nancy, I got one thing for you.
Do you have a motion to do that?
I make the motion.
Okay, John, are you in favor of going to executive session?
Yes.
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 Okay.